Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to convene this special meeting of the city council to consider a resolution that updates and amends the language for putting a ballot measure on the November 3 general election ballot, seeking voter approval of a proposed ordinance, increasing the city's transient occupancy hotel tax on rent, and charge to hotel guests, increasing it from 12% to 14% on July 1, 2021, and then 15% on July 1, 2022. The reason we're having this special meeting is because at our last meeting, we actually did approve this resolution by a 5 to 0 vote. And after the meeting, staff pointed out to us that we needed some slight grammar and syntax corrections, as well as putting a ballot title on this ordinance resolution. So we are meeting tonight to approve that. Any questions on that?
I think we need a roll call.
And we need a roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember.
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, just want to make sure that we didn't have any speakers on this item.
We have.
So I believe we're doing a roll call on the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Riddick?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Okay.
I can make some remarks, Mr. Vice Mayor, to kick us off on this item. Thanks for introducing it. So just as the Vice Mayor said, we are scheduling a special meeting tonight because we had to make some changes. So apologies for scheduling a special meeting and having you guys come out on a Wednesday evening. We'll try to make it as short as possible. This one's on me, but it was a late night, so my. So as council and the public knows, on this item, the council directed a couple of changes. And Jessica, if you could pop the new language up, that'd be great. Did direct a couple of changes during the meeting that were different than what staff was recommending. And those changes made sense and were based on feedback that the council received from members of the public and folks who represented the hotel industry and actually specific hotels in Half Moon Bay made comments. And so the council was listening to those comments and making reactions at the meeting. That then caused us to have to go back and make some changes so we could do what the council asked. And as the Vice Mayor said when he introduced the item, it was late. And Matthew, Jessica, and Catherine did their best under pressure to get it right. But like I said, we didn't quite get it. And it's really, we do believe this special meeting is important to redo it because it's very important to get your ballot question exactly right. So as stated, so what is before you is the revised ballot question. Again, still has 75 words. And I do want to just indicate before I go into a little bit of the changes we made that the direction from council is key and is still there as directed. So the direction was delay the start until July 1, 2021, and then also do it in two steps. So go from 12% to 14% effective July 1, 2021, and then a year later, July 1, 2022, go up one more percent to 15%. Those are the two key changes that the council directed. So we did those last time. They're right in front of you this time. But as was stated, we didn't quite get everything right. So the main thing is the title. And so the version that the council approved did not have a title. And the bold letters that you see in front of you are the title. And that is essentially how it would appear on the ballot, where people reading through their ballot information would see a title and then read the question from there. The title is included in the 75 words, so that was part of the challenge that we faced. As mentioned, once we decided that the title was very important, there was a couple of other cleanup things we had to do. And Catherine also then made some associated changes to the ordinance that will accompany this, should it be approved. So Catherine can answer any legal questions or add anything that I missed. Jessica can do the same. I think just for the benefit of everyone, I'll just go ahead and read the ballot question. So it's called the City of Half Moon Bay Hotel/Lodging Tax Measure. To support financial recoveries/stability and maintain services, including 911 emergency response, disaster preparedness, supporting local businesses/residents, and keeping public areas healthy/safe, shall the measure increasing until ended by voters the transient occupancy tax from 12% to 14% on July 1, 2021, and to 15% on July 1, 2022, paid only by hotel lodging guests, providing approximately 1.5 million annually in locally controlled funding for general revenue purposes be adopted? So that's the revised version. It's exactly 75 words. I'll make one other note before I turn it back to the council for deliberation and see if there's any public comments on this item. The 1.5 million obviously is an estimate of what it would generate. That's required by law in a ballot question. So that must be in there, and we did show that last time. I just wanted to underscore that that is an estimate. Obviously, during this time of a pandemic where we know that our hotels were not being operated for a couple of months and are now only being operated probably half of what they normally would be, it's very hard to estimate the future of TOT, given that. But we did the best we could, which is what's required by law. This 1.5 million was based on the average of the previous five years. So given the pandemic and given the effect it might have once implemented all the various factors, we thought this was the nearest and most accurate estimate that we could put forth. Ultimately, since this tax doesn't have a sunset, it will go on forever. Eventually, things will come back, in our opinion, and at some point, it'll be generating even more than 1.5 million. So we thought this was the right number to use. So I just wanted to underscore that. That's why it says approximately. That concludes my staff report. Again, Catherine can add anything. Jessica can add anything, or they can answer questions if you have any. But our recommendation is that you repeal the resolution that was adopted at the previous council meeting and adopt the new resolution, which as an attachment, has the revised ordinance. That concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions. And I think there was a member in the audience, they may have comments.
Jessica, Catherine, did you want to add anything to Bob's staff report?
I don't. No, I think you covered it.
Okay. Jessica, is there any public comment? I know we have.
We do. Kristalyn, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that you're coming back and visiting this and allowing public comments on this. And obviously, I will sound a little bit like a broken record. But I did just want one last effort to note that in the discussion at the end of the last meeting, which was obviously very, very late, it felt like one of the keynotes that the council took into consideration when making changes to the ordinance, which we appreciate, was noted that the county was also considering a 14% increase. And after the meeting, the county confirmed with the chamber that the number they had tossed around was 12% and that it was not moving forward this year most likely and would be 2022. So I did just want to note that that had been a part of the consideration and that there was a change in that. The hotels obviously appreciate that there was movement in their favor on this item. So thank you very much for that. If there was ever a way to make it 13%, then 14%, then 15%, that would be awesome. But thank you for making any type of change, because again, that was wonderful. And then I also wanted to note something that completely I just blanked on. Oh, goodness. Oh, no. Okay, well, that'll conclude that, because I completely blanked out. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you for that extra input, Kristalyn, regarding the county and its intentions. Appreciate that. Okay. Any questions, discussion, comments from the rest of the council? Nope. Harvey, Deborah, nobody? Debbie's already shook her head. No. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
The first motion is to repeal what we've passed, all right?
Right.
It can be done in one motion.
It's on the screen.
Yes. Okay. So I move that we repeal Resolution Number 2020-61 and consider adoption by a 2/3 vote of a resolution setting a measure on the November 3, 2020, general election ballot, seeking voter approval of a proposed ordinance, increasing the city's transient occupancy hotel tax on rent charge to hotel guests from 12% to 14% on July 1, 2021, and to 15% on July 1, 2022.
Great. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes. Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries?
So passed. Great. With that, let's move on to our COVID-19 response update. I think we have a couple of comments from Jessica and Bob regarding our, as of today, being put on a ramp-up list.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll allow Jessica just to give an update, everything she knows at this moment in time.
Yeah, so since we met last week, there haven't been really any other updates except that we did get put on the state's watch list finally this morning. It's been expected for about the past week or two, and it did happen this morning. And so what that means is that if we are on the watch list for three consecutive days, which the county does expect to happen, then as of 12:01 a.m. on Saturday, so basically Friday night, Saturday morning, the following sectors are going to be required to modify their operations to operate outside or by pickup. Basically, their indoor services will have to close, and that's gyms and fitness centers, places of worship and cultural ceremonies, such as weddings and funerals, offices for non-critical infrastructure sectors, personal care services, such as nail salons and body waxing, hair salons and barber shops, and shopping malls. And so that will be across the county and will put us in line with the rest of the Bay Area, frankly, as far as sectors that are allowed to operate, whether indoors or outdoors. So we will monitor that. But like I said, the county does expect to stay on that watch list. So luckily, businesses have a few days to prepare for that coming on Saturday.
And once, just to clarify, is it you're understanding that once we're on that list, it then gets revisited every 14 days? But that minimally, we'd be on the list for 14 days, would have to abide by?
So not necessarily. There are some counties, like Santa Clara, for example, they'll come off for a day and then get put back on. But once you've been on for the three days and those sectors that I just mentioned are required to close indoor operations, that's for a minimum of three weeks. And so if we hit Saturday, but then we came off Monday, those sectors would still be required to operate outdoors for three weeks. There's a date, I'll have to check on it. I believe it's August 3 was for the first batch of those closures. But to prevent, you know, moving back and forth from indoors to outdoors, they set a minimum timeframe for that. But it's possible that we could pop off of the list for a day or two, pop back on.
Okay. And the other quick question I had, because it doesn't seem to come up on a lot of the announcements, but doesn't it also mean that regarding schools, that they have to for two weeks go on a remote-only schedule? Is that right?
So schools, if your county is on the state watch list, in order for your schools to open in-person learning, you would have to be off of the watch list for 14 days or more, consecutive days or more? So until that occurs, any county that has been placed on the watch list, all schools, public and private, within that county, have to start distance learning?
I think that might be good for us to at least mention that in our announcements, even though it hasn't come out on the county yet or even in the state or anything on the news, because everyone else, all the other counties, know that.
Right.
We're one of the last ones, and might not have.
Yeah, but then I can speak with Sean and see how he's approaching it and if he needs any help from us as far as getting the word out with that.
Right. Okay. Anything else on that? On those updates from anyone?
Not for me. Did you have anything, Bob?
I did. And I would just say that we did also put update slash new agenda items. That is something that we have on all council agendas. And occasionally, the council, of course, that's a time where they can provide me and staff direction to consider bringing certain items back, since we do have a gap and don't have another meeting now until the 18th, that we wanted to make sure that opportunity was there for the council. Right now, I just went over the tentative agenda for the 18th. It's not super, super full. Jessica, what are the two or three main items we have on the draft agenda for the 18th at this point?
So the business items that we have right now are the annual law enforcement update from the Sheriff's Department, discussion of RENA, which is Jill Planning Related, a presentation from the Harbor District, and a budget and financial update.
So, you know, a few items. Those are a couple, an hour and a half of time, probably, and there'll be some consent calendar items. But we just, again, wanted to see if the council had any direction, COVID-related or otherwise, for future items.
Yeah, I would like to see us make sure that we invite Midcoast Community Council to this next meeting for an update. It's been a while, and a couple of things are going on in the Midcoast that are pertinent.
Great.
They're on that agenda.
And I would like to have a discussion about a policy where we can have Black Lives Matter painted on the parking lot of the city.
Debbie, you have to unmute?
So what about making masks mandatory?
Yes.
You held off.
Yeah, that was one of my items as well. Two things on that. One, I know staff is already looking at some of what other cities are doing, including, you know, what some fines might look like, or to have what some cities are doing. They're also going to talk to Sheriff's Department about what enforcement might look like, you know, what they are or aren't willing to do, or at least prepare them, just have them, you know, involved in that. Also, I know that at the county level, Dave Canepa is talking about doing just that, have a mandatory mask ordinance for the whole county, which includes fines. So I don't know how quickly the next supervisor's meeting's coming up, or that would come up or not. But it might cover, but we would feel is well enough to cover. But if not, they might not approve it. I would still like to have that. Yeah, I think it'd be great to have it in our agendas to see if, no matter what the county does, we can.
I noticed that the ones that seem to be implementing it are counties. I haven't noticed any cities, but I have seen counties like Contra Costa just yesterday.
Yes.
County enforcement or county mandate is probably better than cities, but.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Riddick, and the rest of the members of council will certainly bring back that discussion, maybe have a couple of options. We'll follow what the county's doing so that we agree, you know, to be in sync with them. But yeah, it's true. Catherine has already done some research on that. All, there was a time earlier on where we had some, we were going to maybe be ahead of everyone with some preliminary direction, maybe to focus on the coastal trail. Then the state preempted us and came with their mandate. So we took a step back. But we'll look at, you know, now that the state has won, would we want to tinker with that? Or just go with the state order? And then, of course, as Robert says, we do have to establish a fine. How we enforce, we could certainly start to talk about that, and we'll bring a couple of options forward on how that might work. But the key to any enforcement is fine. So that has to be established by your council. So Catherine, unless you have anything to add, we'll be happy to bring back the suggestion and some options for you to consider.
Yeah, we've been tracking it. Several counties have moved forward with fines. But several cities have typically in Southern California. So I'm looking at those, generally $100 fine, though some have gone steeper. So we'll bring back some options for council consideration on the 18th.
And I think some of them are tiered fines. $100 for first, and then 500 for second. They have a record of that, so I like that. And I think, you know, based on July 4, how well the sheriffs enforced things on the coast, I think there's some ways that the sheriffs. You know, I want them to have the discretion to, you know, write those citations and fines, because there's always this small percentage of the public that can get very resentful and non-compliant. So I'd like them to have that tool. But I kind of like the way the sheriffs did a lot of things on July 4. I mean, all they had to do was have a couple of buggies riding around on the beaches. They had someone car poised above Surfers Beach. They'd get on their public address from their car, the loudspeaker, when they needed to. And yeah, you know, they could just as easily go up and down Main Street on a busy day or an evening or weekend and say, remember, folks, you need to all be wearing your masks. Kind of just do some enforcement like that, reminding people. And I think that takes care of a lot of the compliance and that they'd be willing to do that. And then if people. But they also need to support the businesses who are already enforcing that and telling their patrons, you need to wear masks. Things get a little heated, right? You know, you got greeters at the Safeway saying the same thing, and there's been incidents where people have been very belligerent. You know, I just want to feel the sheriffs could come in, tell people again what they need to be doing, if necessary, give a citation. So I think it gives them a few more tools, which probably do the trick for most people. What do the rest of you think on that?
I've also been become aware of various issues in the Latino community. I don't know if this item is the one where I can surface these or whether I have to wait till another meeting, but there's a few things here.
Do you think I've something better to bring up during a now or represent that to the community? You're talking about face masks specifically?
Well, I'm talking about, so what is the status of eviction protections, for instance?
So, yeah, I think they're under consideration for extending those, right?
But didn't we pass something locally?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So we did pass something locally. At this point, it is technically, it was a temporary measure. Could be renewed, it has not been. But the state actually took action, authorizing local jurisdictions to extend their protections, I believe it's to the end of September. So that's something that we could, you know, with direction tonight, bring back for the 18th.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Debbie, for bringing that up.
People, it looks like, you know, if Republicans and Democrats in Congress broke or something where maybe the unemployment, you know, saying isn't cut back to 200, but it might be cut back to 300 or 400. And that's for people who can get unemployment. Then there's others who can't.
Right.
But I'm concerned about, you know, evictions, you know. So I think we might want to bring that back to at least have a discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
If everybody agrees that they're concerned about that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Great. Catherine, thumbs up on that one?
Yes, definitely.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Do you have, Kristalyn has her hand raised, if you want to take a comment on that?
Yeah, great.
Kristalyn?
Thank you. In regards to the masks, if we do, either on the county or the city, if we do get to a point where there is a fine or formal ordinance.
Kristalyn, your attention is needed.
Sorry. Okay, sorry about that. If there's a way that we could make a universal sign for the shop windows that maybe has the sheriff's logo on it? Because I know even here at the visitor center, we've had a couple instances of somebody, of people trying to come in without masks and then telling us that we're bleep, bleep, bleeps for trying to enforce it. So if there was some kind of sign that kind of made it a little bit more authoritative that we could use universally up and down the street, I think that would be helpful.
Great idea.
Kristalyn will work on that. I'll have Colleen reach out to you.
Yes, we definitely could co-sponsor a sign of, you know, and help disperse it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks.
So we're thinking. Yeah, I was just clarifying what Kristalyn said. Are we thinking signs that store owners could post, as well as potentially larger signs, where we might need to post them as well, streets and stuff?
I think she's referring to signs on the doors of the businesses.
Right, yeah.
Those recently and some other jurisdictions.
I mean, if we're adding the sheriffs, we have some larger signs that we might want to add that to as well. It might not have to be replacing the whole sign, but actually adding a component.
Well, they should also be on the coastal trail.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. Larger ones, yeah.
So the other thing I heard was that there's problems with getting the Latino community tested. I know that testing is a very general problem now, not just the Latino community, I mean, just getting a hold of test kits and all that stuff. But apparently, the online thing, like the Garely, is a roadblock. And so the question raised, like, could there be, like, pop-up testing for the Latino community? I don't know.
I almost brought that up. Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Debbie.
I was just going to say that the county has just told us that the testing is not going to be open to the general public. You're going to have to pass certain restrictions. And I don't know what these are, but they will be. and I don't know what these are, but they will be online. And if you don't qualify, the only way to get tested is then to go to your family physician.
When did they say that, Deborah?
Just read it this afternoon, and I can't remember where I read it, but it, it's new.
Oh, because I thought Verily was continuing
It will be Verily doing the testing, but there's going to be restrictions. Up till now, they've accepted walk-ins.
Yeah.
So that's why doing that.
Latino, so don't have internet.
That's right.
I didn't, yeah.
We'll follow up on this. This, this may or may not be an action item, um, but certainly could be part of our COVID, uh, our, uh, updating bonds, we'll look into that. Um, but it may or may not be a, a business, an action item.
I had some concerns. Were you at the county meeting by any chance, Bob, today?
Just for the first 15 minutes.
I was there.
Okay.
I was there.
Okay, so what I heard and confirmed, I think you heard the same thing. It came up briefly about testing of farm workers, right? And Latinx community. And Mike said, there's like a bunch of noise in the background, but I heard Mike say, well, he goes, actually, there hasn't, it was very weird. On one hand, he was saying, in terms of who has been tested, obviously there was a lot of positivity, you know, uh, in the Latinx community across the county. But when he specifically mentioned the coast and farm workers, he said, no, we haven't actually had a large increase. Well, of course, that begs the question, yeah, sure, they're not being tested. So if, Bob, you can specifically follow up, because what I envision is, we need a mobile van. You know, we're talking pop-up, we need some sort of maybe mobile van that could, could go to the farmers, farms and areas and show up where community leaders can show up there also and have, you know, good communication around it. And then, of course, the million-dollar question is, in that community, what happens if you do test positive? We already know there's a lot of density issues in terms of living. You know, how do folks effectively quarantine themselves, right? So it's a much deeper issue, and I think we need, we need farm owners involved in it, you know? We need county ag involved. There's a lot of stakeholders we really need involved, because as a city, you know, without having full services, a lot of those services go back to the county, you know, county anyway, so, you know, Bob, we can talk more about it. But I think, you know, I think Mike and his group, you know, county health, really needs to look at that. I just didn't hear a lot of comprehensive comments from Mike on how that, we should proceed on that, and we're going to rely heavily on the county, you know, and how to... And frankly, I think Verily, which is owned by Google, right?
Yeah.
You know, it'd be great to have them in the conversation. I can't help but have this feeling that if we ask, they would actually come up with something, because they're funding it all. So
Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Kristalyn has info from the county ag commission where they discussed testing. Or if you guys want that info, I can bring her back over.
Yeah, sure. Love to hear it.
Kristalyn, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, uh, the ag commission talked about just this, um, about two weeks ago. And the thing that popped up the most was, um, a worry about the farm workers feeling safe getting tested and how that would affect their documented status. So that there's a general fear there, which is why they've been hesitant to kind of descend on the farms. Um, and the second thing was, from the point of view of the ag commission, no, there has not been any type of effort on figuring out how to, um, isolate the, a farm worker if they tested positive. But then, just I think yesterday, the county, separate from the ag commission, came out and said they were starting that plan, um, with the hotels and farm workers.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the county is doing something independent that, from the ag commission, but the commission
Yeah.
didn't have a lot going on in this regard.
No, I really appreciate that input, Kristalyn. I think we'd have to work pretty closely with the Latino Advisory Council on how we would, you know, how that would be communicated, that folks would feel safe in terms of people's status. And maybe another stakeholder could be the Youth Leadership Institute, where high school students, um, who are communicating back with their families, you know, just getting all that input from whoever... To get input on how can we make it safe? What do people need to hear? And how, and who will they trust to hear it from, right? Who will they trust from their community? Uh, so
Uh, so just that way, I, um, Puente was also on that call. And Puente had already come up with flyers and handouts for the farm workers to, uh, help them. And so, uh, the ag commission was hopefully going to reach out to Puente to start disseminating. Um, so Rita at Puente might be a good contact to reach out to to see what they have already created, um,
Yeah.
no duplication.
Great.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I might, uh, just warn at this point that we, we need to be probably careful about going too far into this, into the subject matter of this item. Uh, the item on your agenda is simply to direct staff to bring back items on a future agenda. So I think we get the gist of it. We'll, we'll look into it and do the research and bring it back.
Great, great.
I wonder if we could, um, include on every agenda going forward, a space on there, update, necessary updates on COVID. You know, something where there is room, because things are going to come up. And we're already in a meeting, rather than holding another meeting, maybe if we had a placeholder for COVID issues.
Absolutely. Um, this, this has been done in a variety of ways. I, and I think it should just come back as, as, as you indicate. At, at, at one point in time, you might recall, we had it on the regular agenda as an update. And then it was so big that we actually started scheduling the six to seven time slot. Um, but I think, I think we're at that point where we go back and it's simply an item like it is today, on every agenda, update on, uh, what we know at that time, yeah.
Right, and then depend what's going on, figure out how much extra time we may or may not need, if something is really bursting on us. Sounds good, um.
I had one last thing, if I could just bring it up real quick.
Yeah.
So, as I mentioned before, internet is a problem for the, uh, Latino families. So the kids are going to have to start school online. And they do have access to tablets and things, but a lot of them don't have access to internet. And I was wondering whether anybody had considered, you know, opening up the library for access to the computers. If not for general library services, but, you know, for families to be able to access, you know, the computers in the library. Um, I, I'm sure there's, you know, help things around that too, but, um, I mean, our building is, our very nice building is sitting there with tools, and it seems a shame if people need access to those tools, but they, they don't have it.
We'll do some inquiry on that. Matthew's probably already thinking, um, about some, uh, some inquiry he could do on that, or maybe he already has, but we'll look, we'll look at that question. Good question.
Great. I had one, one agenda item to add. I want to hear if anyone else had any agenda items before I bring that up for next meeting. Harvey, I can't see you, so I'll just go to your buddy.
No, I, I, I think we, we've got enough on the 18th.
Do we want to add some discussion of the Marata Road Bridge?
Well, there you go, Debbie, that's the one I was going to say. The rea- the reason is, some of us have gotten emails, and Adam mentioned that he's gotten a ton. Um, I haven't, I've seen a couple. Um, and I was thinking if we added that, either, if there's enough time on the regular agenda, great. But, um, if we put it on the agenda, that maybe we have, um, uh, Jim Porter, since it's the county who's going to be managing this, we have Jim Porter from County Public Works to come and do a little presentation, be available for questions from the public. You know, I think it helps to have the county be the face of this. We are a key stakeholder, but they're paying for this, they're owning this. Um, he can ask, answer the most difficult questions about anything regarding history, future, come in for updates once in a while, um.
Jessica did some really nice talking for us, too.
Yeah. And then, um, who else did we say Bob might be good to bring in would be, um, I hope there was someone else who could talk to some of that. Oh, me, no.
Well, possibly Caltrans.
I was going to say, yeah, perhaps someone from Caltrans, because that big issue is what would be the safety
I'll do my best, I'll do my best, don't...
Well, you know, again, these issues come up.
I'm not a Caltrans person.
A lot of folks
We're setting, we're setting up a staff meeting with, with the right Caltrans people. Uh, uh, Jim is, Jim is getting a meeting with the, the highest possible person he can, the district director.
And what a lot of the public might not be aware of is, you know, a lot of the public might see it as a major, you know, burden, barrier to recreation. But there's a lot of employees who work at restaurants, farms, et cetera, who daily ride their bikes or walk to work on that. So again, this huge safety issue to all of a sudden have this detour. So some of the public might be aware of it, some not, but I think it's great to have that comprehensive conversation about getting that thing done as quickly as possible.
Sure.
Yeah.
We got it. I think, I think we are getting a full agenda.
Yeah, all of a sudden, yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, well, anything else to discuss before we adjourn? I think we've covered everything.
I'm okay.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone, for coming in, used special time for this meeting.
Jessica, thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you for coming to a meeting on Wednesday evening.